January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Chairman Woodfinn.
Here.
Vice Chair Fox.
Here.
Council Champlin.
Here.
Member Hicks.
Here.
Member Fox.
Here.
Member Smith Meyer.
Here.
Okay, have a quorum, we'll open up the public here, open up the meeting. First item on our agenda is to approve the minutes from the December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, Planning Board meeting, would someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes as submitted?
So moved, I think I was here.
You were here?
Yes, you were. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so we will move on to our agenda overview. Everything on our agenda tonight will be heard, so if you're here for something, we'll get to you. Let's move on to item five in our agenda, determination of completeness component. Could we read item five A into the record?
Nobis Group, on behalf of HLF East LLC, requests a major site plan approval for the construction of a new twenty-two thousand eight hundred square foot structure and one thousand two hundred and fifty square foot structure for the purpose of a car dealership and associated site improvements, and a conditional use permit for the addition of impervious surface area within the Aquifer Protection District at one-three-four Manchester Street in the Highway Commercial District. Staff does recommend that this application be determined complete. We also recommend that it be determined to development of regional impact because it is in the Aquifer Protection District of Pembroke, and we recommend the public hearing be set for February sixteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, thank you.
Okay, so there is a determination of completeness component, we do have a development of regional impact, and we'll notify the Pembroke folks. If anybody's here regarding this, we won't take any public testimony on this, it will be done on the February sixteenth meeting. So we have a determination of completeness component, would someone like to make a motion to determine the application complete, and set the public hearing for February sixteenth?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, we have a determination of, we have a development of regional impact, someone like to make a motion to determine that this application is a development of regional impact, and notify the planning folks over in Pembroke.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, that moves us on to five B in our agenda, if we could read that into the record?
Wilcox and Barton Incorporated, on behalf of SPCA of Concord Merrimack County, request major site plan approval for construction of a new two thousand five hundred and fifteen square foot structure and associated site improvements for the purpose of a commercial kennel at ninety-three ninety-five Silk Farm Road in the Open Space Residential District. The applicant is also proposing to merge Silk Farm Road properties with two forty Clinton Street, which is also in the Open Space Residential District. Staff recommends this application be determined complete, not a development of regional impact, and the public hearing be set for February sixteenth.
Okay, so have we read into the record, we've got a development of, excuse me, we've got a determination of completeness component, would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, and set the public hearing for February sixteenth?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, that moves us quickly to item six in our agenda, design review applications by consent. If anyone's here for applications, for sign applications which are in our agenda six A through I in the agenda, we will take these all with, under design review, excuse me, under consent, which means all the applications will be approved as one with architectural design review comments taken into consideration. So if anybody's here regarding any of those, if you could make yourself known, has any complaints or comments on them? Any member of the board wish to pull any of these items from the consent agenda? If not, we'll take a motion to approve items six A through six I on the consent agenda with architectural design review recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so that moves us on to the public hearing section of our meeting tonight, item seven A, if we could read that into the record?
Seven A is Advantage Signs, on behalf of Green Blot and O'Rourke P L L C, requesting ADR approval for the installation of one new non-illuminated projecting sign at forty-nine North Main Street in the Central Business Performance District. This was pulled, requested to be pulled from consent by the applicant because they did not agree with the recommendations of the Architectural Design Review Committee, you could maybe get an update from staff.
Okay, is the applicant here? Okay, give a staff update?
Yes, so the original proposal was for the sign to be within the archway, however, it was not centered within the arch. There is a, it looks like it's a cinder block post, and that is a few inches within the archway, so looking at it, it was slightly off-centered, and ADR didn't like the look of it, so they had asked the applicant to pursue a blade sign, which the applicant submitted, but then came back saying that the landlord was not supportive of the mounting of the projecting sign on the column. So then, we got another submission where the projecting sign was in the brick of the second floor. Unfortunately, the sign was too large, and it is located too high, which would require variance, so we're kind of back at square one, this is all unfolded over the past couple weeks with various design changes and communications from staff.
Okay, so what's in our packet, excuse me, what's in our packet now, is the best solution we've got? Is that the visual, the visual that I'm looking at, so it's kind of offset, if you're looking at it to the right-hand side of the, of the arches?
Yes.
What's that, what's this building? I know it's right next to Joe King's and the Capitol.
Or actually, what is in your packet is the projecting sign, I believe.
Okay, do we have a visual on what, that's the, that's the one that is the, is the recommendation from?
So that, that was, that was the plan, and when we had launched this item as the agenda, that was the expectation that that would move forward, but then we heard, not even a week ago, that the landlord was not supportive of that.
He was not supportive of this?
Correct.
And the applicant's not here, is that right? Okay, I'm gonna bump it back, and, and we'll hear it again next month then, so I'm not comfortable approving it or denying it until we can hear some reasoning from somebody. Is that okay? Is that, I mean, where does it stand as far as the, so the applicants, the applicant submitted it?
Correct.
The owner doesn't like it?
And then they submitted a revision, but that not only doesn't comply with our size requirements, it's also located too high in the building.
So back to ADR, let's start the process, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah?
So ADR made a recommendation, they complied with it.
Yes.
So they're back to the beginning that they first submitted, is really the application that they have. Do you have an example, a picture of the original application, that we can at least show the board what we started with and what we're sort of back to? Because it sort of comes...
Visually, it can be pulled from the ADR agenda, or I can pass my computer around.
It's, can you bring it up on that laptop?
Yes, I can, that would be easier.
Do you mind? Just so...
Why don't you do that, Sam?
Because I'm not sure ADR has anything different to say.
We're gonna move on to the next one on the agenda, we'll come back to that, we'll table that, seven A for the moment. We don't need a motion to table during the meeting, do we?
No. We just won't call it tabling.
We won't call it table.
We'll skip it for the moment.
We're gonna skip it for now.
Moving on.
All right, seven B, which is, if we could read seven B into the record?
Thorns of Concord, request ADR approval for the replacement of an awning at one forty North Main Street in the Central Business Performance District. So this was a building permit in Performance District because of the awning, and they got, they did get a license from council to have the awning in the right-of-way. However, ADR did recommend them changing the color, which they were not in agreement with, so they asked to come before the board so that they could keep the color scheme that they had originally proposed.
Does that cover it?
It's not that they weren't, they were opposed to the color, they didn't feel that the rendering was clear, so they did supply a more clear rendering. ADR did believe that the color of the awning and the color of the text were too close, but they wanted some color examples and material samples to clarify.
Anything would look better than this disgusting-looking awning that's on here right now, so.
It's the very next picture.
I know, I'm just saying, this one that's on here. So is the, is the rendering version similar in color of what the original probably looked like twenty years ago, or however long this one's been on?
Hard to say, I could not speak from my own observations.
Okay.
Suzanne.
I don't know, the applicant, yeah, come on up.
Have the color stamped on the public hearing.
Okay, so we'll open up the public hearing, and welcome you to the table, come on up if you can, just, we'll have you sign in, and if you've got a sample, just get it to Sam, and he'll put it around here.
I didn't realize that's what the question was, that the two colors were too close? So, carrot there, and then the broken blue.
Holy cow, that's bright. Does that work?
Now, please do.
If you could just state your name for the record?
Kristy Worthing.
Okay, and Kristy, are you the sign installer or the awning installer?
I am the owner of Thorns of Concord.
Okay, great, you're welcome.
Yeah, just up in there. And Concord awning is supposed to be during the install.
That is orange.
It is carrot.
Carrot orange, huh?
Carrot orange, as opposed to the super-bright safety orange.
So for the record, the carrot orange that's in the packet that you've submitted here, and the color that's been starred, which is like a maroonish type of color.
Yeah.
And that's the color that you want to use for the text across the bottom?
For the font, yeah.
And ADR's comment, Sam, on the, it was just that the color wouldn't pop enough with the name, is that their concern?
They, they were concerned by it, they weren't opposed to it, but mainly because the rendering wasn't a very good representation.
Gotcha.
Hence the request for samples.
Gotcha.
The rendering is not carrot.
Yeah, yeah, the rendering's not carrot.
And of course, when they did that proof, they put the proof, I'm sorry, put the proof over, yeah, the photo of the original awning.
Yep. Okay, Suzanne?
What is the, what is the profile? Like, is it similar to what's there, a runner's alley, or is it square, or is it?
It's the contact style, so it's got the round at the top of the awning, and comes down to, of course, I don't have any of those things with me, I didn't bring my phone out here.
So it's not the same as what's there now?
Not the same as what's there now.
But your rendering of what's proposed doesn't look round, curved.
It doesn't?
Doesn't?
Well, it's kind of a straight-on shot, so it's difficult to tell.
And of course, that's what I was supplied with from Concord awning, so that's what I was working with.
So, I don't get it.
Can't, can't picture it from the photo.
I mean, it looks like it's perfectly, is it have rounded edge? I mean, when it sticks out, what does it look like?
If you're looking at the profile, it's gonna be like that.
Oh, okay, so it just curves at the top, rather than coming straight down like a triangle?
Exactly.
Okay, gotcha.
And then the new awning will be fitted tight to the bottom of the frame, there will be no fringe.
So what is the border around this image from the proposal?
I believe that was digital rendering, where they tried to block out the old awning to put the new one on, so.
Oh.
It was, it's not the best rendering. That was also one of ADR's concerns, they had the same issues, understanding the image.
So the, the awning itself will be smaller than the existing awning that's there?
Yeah, yeah.
Which isn't a bad thing, yeah.
With any good light, a little more light to the window.
Any other questions? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this application? Close the public hearing, any comments, discussions, concerns, ADR concerns, or if not, we'll take a motion to approve it as submitted with the color samples that have been provided?
Home of approval.
Second.
I was gonna say, I'll second that. Okay, any discussion? We've got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries, you're all set.
Awesome.
You take your sample back with you, thank you very much for bringing it along, and have a great night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item seven C in our agenda?
Do we wanna go first?
Seven A.
Oh, seven A, yeah, I forgot about seven A. Okay, so this is, to bring us up to date, so in our packet, we got a blade sign that's sticking out, or a, a projecting sign that's sticking out off of the, off of that.
This is the original, and this offset was what ADR took issue with.
Well, that's, in my opinion, much more attractive than the blade sign hanging out over the, over the edge, over the, the front of the building and hiding the sign behind it.
Cool.
Yeah. So ADR has an issue with what, Sam, tell me again?
That it's not centered in the arch.
Well, how would you?
Well, I suppose that, that's a good question, I'd have to be on side.
I mean, it would almost have to be at an angle coming out in order to...
You might be able to attach some brackets to, you know, just above, you know, where the, where the arch starts, but...
Is the logo not centered?
We're not understanding what's not centered about it, can you really like...
So if, if this is the peak of the arch?
Oh, I see.
If you draw a line straight down, it's not centered, so if it, if it's mounted to this side of the arch, it's, the side of the arch is over here. There's this part of the building that they're attaching to, which is not centered around the arch.
So, you know, I think what, if they were to, that, the, what do you call them, the monogram thing, is like a separate piece that jumps up. I think that if they had a whole rectangle and had the logo, the monogram in it, it would not look as not balanced, you know what I'm saying? If they just redesigned the, the interior of that rectangle and didn't have the projecting bump out at the top, what do you think? If it was just their...
David?
I believe ADR would take issue with that, and that may actually not even comply with our sign requirements, because I believe they are at their maximum for square footage, and if you extended that rectangle to encompass the monogram, I believe you would be over the sign calculation area.
Do we want to discuss this, or do we want to send it back to ADR?
I have a question, if...
Okay, I had David first, let me have David.
Well, I just, my comment is, if you look at that picture that I'm looking at, the arch is, is not balanced, the, the apex of the arch favors the right-hand side.
I think that's what ADR considers.
You'll never get it to fit, I don't think.
Right, I agree. Carol?
If the monogram was moved...
Over.
Over towards the right, so that it didn't look like it was trying to be centered, it seems to me that that could...
That's a solution.
Or brackets.
Byron?
Did they try to hang it?
I'm sorry, what?
Was there any discussion of, was there any discussion of hanging it from the arch rather than trying to attach it to something which, which is offset?
That conversation did not occur at ADR.
Okay, I mean, I mean, if they're looking for, to me, that would be the solution, would be just to hang it.
So, from a direction, from a direction perspective, are we more comfortable within the arch or outside of the arch?
I like the hanging sign, but if they can't do it, I can't.
Okay, so I'm gonna say we send it back to ADR, and they have the applicant come back in with some options, make sure that the owner of the building is on board, whatever those options are, and we'll, we'll hear it next month, but I don't want to waste any more time on it.
Could that be an optical thing from the photograph?
No, because the, the way the arch is, you can see they've built in on it, and it's just not gonna...
It's never gonna be centered, okay.
All right, so that'll move us on to seven...
Make a motion to you?
We're gonna make a motion to send it back to ADR? Okay, so I'll make that motion that the sign from Advantage Signs from seven A be sent back to ADR for further discussion and clarity.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second, and any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Seven B we hit, let's move on to seven C.
National Sign, on behalf of Brothers Cortado, request ADR approval for the installation of a new non-illuminated window sign and a new non-illuminated blade sign at three-five Bicentennial Square in the Central Business Performance District. I believe this one was also pulled from consent at the request of the applicant due to the ADR recommendation.
Okay, is the applicant here? We're not doing very well.
Notice this was centered, I promise.
Hey, this is the old coffee shop, right? The old...
The old True Brew.
True Brew. Okay, let's hear a quick update, Sam, if we can, or whoever's got it.
Sure, so they had no issue with the window sign, the question was around the projecting sign. The rendering, the scale is not accurate, it's, I believe, a thirty by thirty-six rectangle, although it looks like it's quite a bit wider than that, that was just a rendering issue. But ADR expressed an interest in the colors being flipped, where it was the, a black sign with white text, which would mimic the window sign. I have been in this establishment, their logo is switched all the time from black text to white text.
Black to white, white to black.
But ADR thought that the black background sign would be more in keeping with the character of Bicentennial Square.
I would agree with that, got you. No comments from the audience, any, Byron?
Well, I mean, you know, in this photograph of the window sign, yeah, it's white on black, but if it was at night and the lights were on inside, it would be light on, black on light, you know, so it's, you know, I, to me, this is not a huge difference.
Right.
I agree.
So would, would we want to approve it with the, with the condition that the sign colors be flipped, so it's a black field, white text and logo? And sign size is okay, thirty-six, I mean, it looks odd in the picture, but I think that you said just like a rendering issue more than anything.
What was the response from the applicant on that?
They didn't want to do that, they wanted it white.
Yeah, I...
Well, we actually, we never heard a response from the applicant, they had, you know, made their desires known in the initial application, but then there was no follow-up from them that we heard, and this was communicated to them following the ADR meeting.
Here's their chance to speak up, so, if we don't know...
I think the way they presented it looks fine.
The way they presented it's fine, yeah, but it's just, again, ADR's recommendation that it be black field and a black sign, and white text is their piece. Matt?
I agree with a couple of you who said that it would look better, but I'm, we could, I would vote to approve it as is with the recommendation that they flip it, because we all just think it's better. Sign review and the planning board, I think.
And that was ADR's motion, it was a recommendation rather than a condition.
Okay, so we're fine with the sign, we're fine with the logo, the look and the feel of it, the placement of it.
Yep.
We can approve it as submitted and make a recommendation that they flip the colors. Is that acceptable?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries, we'll move on.
Mr., Mr.?
Yes, sir.
May I make a statement?
Yes, you may.
I just wanted to mention that it's very gratifying to see so many downtown merchants who are sprucing up their properties.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, certainly in this case, it's a new business, but in other cases that we've had for us tonight on the consent calendar, and also that we've taken up, we have businesses who are, are really upping their game, and that's a great thing to see.
And there's several of them in the downtown district, with Rebel Stoke is in there as well as a couple of others, so, very good point, thank you very much, Byron.
Thank you.
Okay, that was seven C, let's go to seven D, if we could read that into the record?
Cowan and Gudrow Architects, on behalf of Technical Education Concepts, request ADR approval for the renovation of the southern facade of a building inclusive of a canopy roof addition and new ramp at thirty-two Commercial Street in the Opportunity, Opportunity Corridor Performance District. This is a building permit in Performance District, so I recommend we open the public hearing.
Okay, so we'll open up the public hearing, get a quick staff update if we can on this. Why was it pulled from consent?
We, we always pull the building permits in Performance Districts from consent.
So this is basically a facelift of the side of the building, they are kind of opening up, if looking at the renderings, the colored renderings, the, the right side of the building, there is an old overhead door that they want to expose in some of the original brickwork. This is basically a storage area for, I believe, they ship educational technology, so this is a shipping and receiving area. ADR was very complimentary of the color schemes and in keeping with the character of this block, and, and recognizing the historic nature of the buildings in the area.
Yes, there's some beautiful architecture underneath this textured one-eleven, this is the old Plumbing Supply Building, I can't remember the name of it, Plumbing, help me, somebody, anybody, no?
Goulet.
Goulet Supply, it's down in the, was down there in the Fishy Pond, it's a beautiful, beautiful old ramblin' building. So Heather, from our perspective, so what's before us, isn't, is it a public hearing?
Yeah, we opened the public hearing.
Okay, I did open the public hearing, you're right, but what's before us as far as approval, just to hear?
To see if anybody wants to speak on its behalf, and then watching the person.
Any member of the audience wish to speak on behalf of or opposed to this nomination? Come on up.
And I didn't have a label.
Kevin Gudrow, with Cowan Gudrow Architects, and we're here on Wake You Up. Victor Camarosa, who's the owner of Techit, and essentially, he would like to give a facelift to the south side of this building.
Can you move that mic towards you just a little bit? Thank you.
How's that? Is that okay? The, the T-one-eleven on the building has seen better days, so we're looking to put two different types of metal siding there. The building is an industrial building, so we were looking for that industrial feel with the metal siding, and it'll be no, virtually no maintenance for him, right now, he's on a painting schedule with the T-one-eleven. And while he's doing this, he would also, as this gentleman just mentioned, sort of dematerialize the southeast corner of the building, because that's the entrance that some of his customers in delivery trucks come in. So we thought we'd expose the original corner of that building with the crossbuck doors, and show a portion of the original loading dock that currently is encased in these temporary partitioned storage areas. We would also like to rework... We would also like to rework his entry stair. Right now, it just comes straight off the building. We would like to turn it to the east and incorporate a ramp. That ramp would do two functions for Mr. Amarosa. It would allow accessibility to the building, which he currently doesn't have. But primarily, it's for moving product on a cart from inside the building down to the parking lot level to be loaded into vehicles, or vice versa, taking product out of vehicles and bringing it into the building. Right now, he has a series of temporary ramps that he has to use out of one of his overhead doors. And then we would extend the canopy in the plane of the existing sloping roof, it's a low-slope depedium membrane roof. We would extend that canopy to cover both the new stair and the new ramp.
Okay.
That's essentially it.
Thank you, Suzanne?
What's the status of that little shed? Is that on constitution ab?
I believe so.
Is that there now?
The shed's there now, yep.
It doesn't, I mean, it's such a beautiful, I remember it being a really nice facade, it's kind of too bad.
Yeah, there's a set of stairs that goes into the basement, so that's sort of a doghouse sort of covering over those stairs, the granite steps that go down into the basement of the building.
I think it's right on the street, too, isn't it? I mean, it's right adjacent to the street.
So that's not going to be changed?
Not in form, it won't be. They'll probably give it a new paint job, or change the T111 to new. Not exactly sure, we didn't spend a lot of time talking about that, we just figured it's there, it needs to stay in some fashion. So we didn't, wasn't tops on our list.
Well, it might be kind of nice, if you're going to renovate it, to have it maybe that darker gray, rather than, I mean, it looks like it's just attached, I mean, it looks totally unrelated, but maybe there's a way, if you're going to just renovate it, that you could not make it stand out so much, so that it kind of blends in?
Yep.
Yeah.
We can take a look at that.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments, concerns? Any member of the audience have any questions or comments? Thank you very much for your testimony.
You're welcome.
Can you sign in, please, if you have it?
Yeah, if you have your sign in on the sheet there.
Thank you.
We will close the public hearing, anything else from staff? Pretty straightforward. So do you need a motion, Heather? Or what, though?
To approve?
To approve the-
Application.
Application for renovations on the southern facade of the building, inclusive of the canopy roof addition and new ramp at 32 Commercial Street. Would someone like to make a motion to approve that application as submitted?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, that moves us on to item eight in our agenda, if we could read item 8A into the record.
Reardon Builders, on behalf of Matthew and Elizabeth Finney and Mary and Christopher Miller, request an amendment to a minor subdivision approval to request a waiver to allow overhead utilities where underground utilities are required at 23 and 25 Portsmouth Street in the Residential Neighborhood District. So we had previously approved this subdivision application, and the subdivision regulations require utilities to be underground, and I'm not sure if it was overlooked or whatnot, but when they were constructing, they realized that they shouldn't put them underground, and so this is simply coming back to get that waiver to do the overhead utilities, and staff is not opposed to the waiver request.
What, we missed it the first time around?
The applicant did.
Yeah.
The applicant did.
Right.
Blame it on the applicant.
Well, they didn't make the request the first time around.
Okay, so we've got before-
I recommend you open the public hearing, I'm not sure if anyone's here.
So we'll open the public hearing, is there anybody here regarding this application?
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Erin Reardon Lambert, I'm here on behalf of Reardon Builders. I don't have anything more to add than what was presented by staff, other than to mention that Unitil isn't supportive of this waiver, it was their suggestion that this waiver be requested, they prefer that it go overhead to the new residents. Be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions, Ms. Lambert? Nope?
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will, any other questions or comments from the, from the audience? No, we'll close the public hearing. So we've got before us a recommendation to grant waiver to section 2606-1 Underground Utilities of the subdivision regulations to not require the installation of overhead utilities at 23 and 25 Portsmouth Street, utilizing the criteria of RSA 674-441, which states that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set with that one?
These two fell asleep down here.
Of course, she doesn't sit on the end.
It happens to me, too. Alright, motion still carries. Okay, 8B, we'll read 8B into the record.
Wilcox and Barton, on behalf of New Hampshire Distributors, request an amendment to a major site plan approval to increase the height of the building, and a conditional use permit to allow construction of fewer parking spaces than is otherwise required at 65 Regional Drive in the Industrial District. I don't know, I recommend you open the public hearing.
So we will open the public hearing, and welcome you guys to the table, could we get a quick staff update on this?
Sure, so the conditional use permit is to defer construction of, I believe, eight spaces. This site plan has gone through a number of iterations and amendments over the past couple of years. In regards to the building addition, we had seen this a while back to separate phases one and two. This is being, this is phase one. I believe the height of the addition was somewhere around 28 feet or so, and now the proposal is 40 or 42, I believe, for racking requirements.
So I guess we'll take it as a good sign that they need more space to shove more beer and equipment in there, right?
It's all about COVID.
That's a good sign.
Carefully placed.
COVIDed.
So this originally got Architectural Design Review approval, and we did not send it back to them for this. We just missed it on the application, so I just wanted to point that out, that ADR hasn't seen it. We had made some questions about, can there be some architectural features added? Because 40 feet is quite a bit taller than 28 feet, and it's all kind of a very blank, straight facade. And I guess they, we'd mentioned windows, but there was a concern about the temperature controls because of what's inside the building. I just wanted to bring these issues up, because-
Sounds like a great opportunity for a-
It's gonna say mural.
Yeah.
It's gonna say mural, it's gonna say public art.
It is in the Industrial District.
Well, that's okay, people are gonna enjoy murals anywhere, and it, you know, counteracts that big, blank, white space.
There'll be big horses, it's what they'll be.
Yeah, you could have great, big Clydesdales on it.
Fake windows, anyways.
Is it corgi?
Welcome to the table, if you could state your names for the record.
Good evening, I'm Erin Lambert with Wilcox and Barton, and I have a meeting-
Bill Hickey with the H.L. Turner Group.
So why don't I walk through the minor changes to the site, and then I'm going to turn it over to Bill to walk through the building and answer some of your questions about the height and materials. So since we were last before you, they are moving forward with the addition. As Sam mentioned, the square footage, the footprint is the same, the height is slightly different. But what is unique about this addition is it's entirely for storage, and so we are asking for a conditional use permit to defer some of the parking that's required. So the site currently has 89 parking spaces, and New Hampshire Distributors finds that that is more than enough parking for their current staffing and employees. And so, one thing that we are doing is adding six spaces in the front of the building, so that we will actually have 95 parking spaces when Phase One is completed. But we are requesting to defer this 16-stairs parking lot, which is what's required to provide the, oops, I lost my number, 104 spaces per the zoning ordinance. So we certainly have room to, but we prefer not to build the impervious surface as it's not needed, and we don't need to take down trees or disturb the landscaping that's in that area. The other part of our original site plan was the 16-stairs truck parking, and they just don't need that right now. So their request is to defer the truck parking along with the 16-stairs parking lot. We'll build it in the future if it's needed. But one thing that we found that we were happy about, there's five parking spaces in this area right now. We were able to go to 11 and reduce the impervious surface. There's less pavement, because right now, the driveway width is just really wide for some reason, and when we narrow it to 18 feet and we add the 11 spaces, we're actually decreasing the pavement by 2,000 square feet. So that is the site plan request that we have before you this evening. And I will turn it over to Bill to walk you through the building elevation.
So building from the street side is the south elevation, you can see the height difference, the office building, the brick building that's in the front. There's a section of existing building, basically from the brick to the proposed warehouse addition that's currently CMU, and the proposal is to clad that in the same insulated metal siding that the addition is proposed to be. And I think as Heather had mentioned, or Sam had mentioned, due to the racking system that NHD is proposing inside, we needed some excess height, extra height, to make that system feasible. If anybody's questioning this lovely little slope off to the side, when you raise a building height like that, there's a possibility and code requirement of snow drifting, and the intent is to frame a sloped roof on the two sides that will prevent that snow from drifting, and thus alleviating the need to do structural upgrades to the existing framing. There's, New Hampshire Distributors, there's signage here, and there are some logos that are intended to be removed and reinstalled.
So this is a street view from Regional Drive?
Correct.
So as I'm looking at the brick building that's there now, and kind of the warehouse and the gated areas over on the right, this is on the left of that?
Correct, yep.
What's the brick building that's there, so I'm confused?
There's the office-
Yeah, but isn't it longer than that?
It, we-
You just cut it off, right?
Cut it off, yeah. That's what would fit on the sheet.
So this is what we're going to see driving by from Regional Drive?
And it's really, I mean, the existing warehouse is masonry, it'll be new metal, but the warehouse portion that's there now is set back, but it has the exact same siding, so we're just going to pull it forward, so the warehouse is flush along that front side.
And what was the other side, what was the other elevation, sorry?
The other elevation you're seeing is this one.
Down the driveway, if you will, there's a driveway where they receive product.
Okay.
So that's kind of driving down.
That's fine, okay.
And the comment about the windows, two things. This is a temperature-controlled warehouse per the suppliers, and they're very proud of the fact they very rarely have to turn on their equipment because it's so well-insulated, and the racking system will basically be floor-to-ceiling, so the really, the windows won't do much to address that. However, we'll be happy to discuss with the folks at NHD the possibility of a mural. I don't know, that hasn't been discussed up to this point, but be happy to bring that up with them and see if they're receptive to that.
I would love it if you would, just have them give me a call.
We will do that.
At the very least, they have a lovely logo that they could put in, put on there.
Would that exceed the signage requirements?
Put you through hell, put you through hell with the sign requirements.
Wait a minute, we got approval-
Much easier to do a mural.
So I remember a conversation with the New Hampshire Archives folks on the building they put in on Fruit Street, which was two and a half stories, just solid, you know, solid wall. We were really concerned, we went back and forth with them on, you know, can you do this, can you do this, can you do this? They came up with a couple of ideas to put things, you know, placards or whatever's there, kind of a bullseye that they've got on, and it looks great, it brings the height of the building down. I'm thinking, as I'm looking at it, wouldn't it be great to see, you know, a small Budweiser and Bud Light, and all the different ones with a little spotlight on it, or something like that? And I understand that's, that's just window dressing at that point, I understand why you don't want to put windows on it. I'm just concerned, it's a big industrial, it's an industrial building, and you can do what you can do, you can do what you can do, but, you know, something to kind of bring the height down, or put some marketing on the side of the building that Budweiser can pay for, or somebody can pay for, as they swap out. Heather?
I was just going to say, I mean, yeah, going from a brick facade there to this kind of a facade is kind of a jarring change aesthetically, I think, for the street, but is there any way you could just change the color, or make that addition like a black band, or a dark slate band? You know, I mean, you can do a lot with colors to mitigate the effect of, like, now there's just this, you know, sort of glaring blank-
Yeah, the owner's preference is to maintain the same color, but, you know, we can certainly look at that. So what, where would you add the color, Heather?
I was just thinking the height addition, you know, sort of like, make that like a black band or something.
Okay, it's difficult, because the panels will come basically from the foundation to the roof in one piece.
Yeah.
So to break that, as a separate panel, flashing details and all that fun stuff-
You probably just need to paint it, I mean, same, like with a mural, like, you could do a mural, or you could just paint a-
I like the mural more and more.
Thank you, Heather, you're pushing them in the right corner.
Or you could put some bright pink stripes.
Flamingos.
Yeah.
We'll suggest that as well.
Okay, comments, Suzanne? Suzanne's going to want to put some trees in front of it, right?
There are trees, I promise, I promise there are trees.
No.
I'll turn it back over to Erin at this point.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Suzanne, I'm sorry.
No, I guess I, I could not help but notice that the evergreen tree planting detail and the shrub are not the cities.
Yeah, the plan sets from 2017, so some of those things haven't been updated, we certainly can do that.
Okay, oh, well, the tree one is, I think, ours. The shrub one and the evergreen one aren't.
Okay, certainly updated.
That is, yeah, so that would be good to change.
I think you can see-
Yeah, I was going to say-
Too, there'd be quite a bit of greenery in front of the warehouse.
Oh.
So, maybe that, well, we didn't depict that in our rendering, shame on us, but maybe that will help.
I was going to say, if you're familiar with Regional Drive, I think we can all acknowledge that this is one of the nicest, you know, manicured landscape plots. One of the things we are doing as part of this project is doing some infill on the street trees that are there. So you can see right now, they're pretty far apart, and there's a little bit of infill going on along the road. There's already a pretty well-planted landscape island, and then we're adding landscaping along the building, where today, that's just all lawn. So the area at the head of the spaces and the building addition today is just, is 100% grass. We are adding some additional landscaping here, where we can, next to the generator and dressing up this door. So the landscaping will be more consistent with what we see at the entrance of the building, and really, you know, does its best to bring a lovely aesthetic to this industrial area.
So those, those trees are all quantitized on this plant list, or are those an addition?
No, they're on the plant list.
Well, it doesn't look like a ton, there's only 10. There's three, nine, nine, 13, but they've got evergreens, I just, I mean, they're just not, you have three oaks. And three. It doesn't seem that robust to me. I know landscaping can mean all different things, but as far as for the shade trees, that's not robust.
So we only, yeah, so the quantity that we're adding has to do with the areas that we're looking at, and this was designed back when the requirement was one per 1,000, so there are more trees than are required by the current ordinance today.
Okay, other comments, questions, concerns? Any member of the audience wish to address this? Last chance? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We've closed the public hearing. Anything else? Board has recommendations, comments? Before us, we've got the recommendation to grant the CUP per Article 28-7-11B to defer the construction of eight parking spaces and the construction of additional truck parking to Phase Two. Would someone like to make a motion to, make a motion to grant the CUP as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 4.2 is to grant ADR approval for the modification of the height of 17,782 square-foot building addition from 28 to 40 feet. The board may condition this approval upon the applicant appearing before ADR if so desired. I don't believe there's a recommendation from this board to go back to ADR, if I'm wrong, let me know. If not, we'll take a motion to grant ADR approval as outlined in our packet.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Other than murals and something to break up the siding? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 4.3 is to grant, grant site plan, excuse me, grant site plan amendment approval for the alteration of a previously approved parking configuration, building addition and related site improvements at 65 Regional Drive. Those are outlined in precedent conditions 1 through 3, and subsequent conditions 1 through 5. Would someone like to make a motion to grant site plan amendment as approval as outlined?
So moved.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, guys, very much. Get myself a drink of water before I choke, and if we could read the next item into the agenda. What do we add? 7C.
8C.
8C.
Richard Bowen, on behalf of Arthur H. Moore- Richard Bowen, on behalf of Arthur H. Morse, request a conditional use permit to allow a 30-foot driveway separation where a 40-foot separation would otherwise be required at 14 Walnut Street in the residential neighborhood district. Staff recommends the application be determined complete and open the public hearing, and I believe that we have a staff update.
Okay, we'll have you sign in while we're getting a staff update, if we could. What's that?
Did you open the public?
We will open the public hearing, and we will get a staff update, if we could.
Sure. So, this lot currently doesn't have a driveway. It is entitled to have a driveway, and they've been working with engineering, and Gary can speak to this better than I can, for the location of the driveway. To locate it according to code, it would cause some issues with proximity to, I believe, the intersection, and it's on a weird curve. So, by allowing and using the CUP, it's in a more convenient location. It's safer, although it's within 30 feet of a driveway where 40 is required. Correct me if I'm wrong on any of that.
Yeah, you got it all.
Look at that.
Don't need to pry anymore.
If there's anything else that you think is necessary?
The only thing I guess I would add is that, as Sam mentioned, the way the zoning code lays it out, this driveway would be a little closer to the Canal Street intersection than we in engineering would like. So, we would prefer to shift it up the road and away, so when Rick came to us, he asked us about this, we asked him to voluntarily apply for the CUP to basically shift the driveway away from the intersection at our own request. He kindly agreed to do so, which is effectively why you're here tonight.
Okay, great. If you could state your name for the record?
Richard Bowen.
Okay, Richard, this is your home? No.
No.
Arthur Morse.
Yeah, looking to buy it, so I'm filing it on behalf of him.
Okay, so we can't open our report?
Yeah, I think that this, I'm not sure what the problem was, but I actually did have trouble opening this one as well earlier today, so I'm not sure what the problem is.
Okay. So, we're flying a little blind on what are, what we're going to be...
Do we have the report?
I can pull it up.
Can you?
That'd be great.
Might be able to. We'll see.
Yeah, let's do it.
Yeah, who knows?
So, hang on. Hang tight just a second, sorry.
But the motion would simply be to grant the condition...
Get access to the estimate.
That's all we got, okay.
Right.
I do.
So, do we need to hear anything on this?
No, we don't have access here. We'd have to plug the...
Do you open the hearing?
I can read the motion for you, if that'd be easier.
Yeah, what's, so really, before us, we don't have any plans to look at or any elevations or anything like that, really?
No, nothing like that.
I saw that, yeah. I saw the, I saw the applicant, what's in here, and the drawings.
The only motion is to grant the CUP, correct?
I believe so. Let me just confirm that.
And staff's in support of this?
Yes.
We are, yes.
Any comments or questions from the board? Concerns? Any member of the audience? Nope? No, I don't see anybody? Nope? So, we're going to close the public hearing and I think get you out of here in a quick hurry.
Yeah, the only motion is to grant that conditional use permit in accordance with section 2878B of the zoning ordinance.
287B.
2878B.
Eight.
To allow for a 30-foot driveway separation at 14 Walnut Street where 40 feet is required.
Okay, so as outlined, as Sam outlined, 2878 for a 30-foot driveway width?
Driveway separation.
Separation. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and roundly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set? That was easy, huh?
It was easy.
That was the easiest one you'll have.
Have a good evening.
Okay, you, too.
You, too.
Okay, that brings us to our other business section of the meeting. We've got item nine on our agenda. If we could read it into the record?
Proposed ordinance amendment to section 29.2-1-2B, computation of the amount of impact fee, updating the variable unit rate for transportation and recreation facilities in accordance with the annual inflationary rate. This was added after the agenda was published, and I could not get the links to work, so I emailed all of you the report and the ordinance. Essentially, we're not, we are not recommending the inflationary increase, but we are required statutorily, or actually, per the ordinance, we are required to calculate the inflationary, what the inflationary increase would be, so that you can determine if you would like